Today is Tuesday. Okay, what day is it? June 18th, 2024. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jennifer Dabila.
Brad Hornsby.
Luanne Hook.
Lena.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
Then the first items on the agenda are the approval of minutes. First is the approval of the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024. Has everybody read them? Are there any modifications, changes, points of discussion?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then approval of the Bluff Town Council work session minutes of June 4th, 2024. Has everybody received them? Any changes, modifications?
Motion to approve the work session minutes of June 4th, 2024.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Approval of Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2024. Has everybody read them? Are there any modifications?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2024.
Second motion.
Any points of discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. And finally, approval of the Bluff Town Council work session minutes of June 11th, 2024. Has everybody received them? Have read them and are there any points of modification?
Motion to approve the work session minutes of June 11th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Moving to public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for any person wishing to make a public comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit, the meeting controller will mute you. Prior to the meeting, should have raised the hand icon or put your name in the chat box. Is there any audience, Erin?
No, we don't have anyone in person and the chat box wasn't actually today. And no one has indicated that they're interested in making a public comment at this time.
All right, then we'll move to number one. This is an update on the Dark Sky application and the meeting with Michael Reimer, the program associate with Dark Sky International. And this is a meeting where Sarah Barrack and I met. Michael is taking over from the person we've been assigned to for the Dark Sky. And he came, he was kind of doing a run-through of, I think, his different areas. So ours is one of them. And it was a touch base to make sure that we didn't have any questions about the process. We spent, oh, probably an hour with him. And mostly, we talked about how Sarah is working on the different programs and educational pieces, how we've partnered with Bear's Ears Partnership that will be doing sometime this summer an MOU with BEP. I did ask Sarah that, since we need to have the MOU, if she wanted to send me the blocking points for the MOU, we could send it to Chris and just ask for a very short one so that we can keep this moving this summer. I know a lot of us are in and out of town this summer, so that would help. Excuse, if that would help, we could move it along, certainly move it along for us. And we talked about the ordinance, the exterior lighting ordinance and how it's the majority of people are in compliance and what we'd like to do with talking about future enforcement, starting, you know, with identifying the areas that have a need for some enforcement. Mostly, I think it's people, a few people, but mostly the bigger, like organizations like UDOT, the school district, an area around the Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints building. So we'll go back to that this summer after Sarah and I are both in town and call a meeting. And then I think we'll just start identifying who talks to the school district because they, in the past, they did use a timer. And then that kind of went by the wayside after COVID fell off a little bit. And I've been talking with Kyle Hassler earlier today, and I believe that Sarah reached out to the church leadership to try to work on those lights. When I was told by Kyle Hassler, someone had put in what they thought or hoped were compliant lights a few months back. Somebody duct taped them and messed with the electrical connections and they had to have an electrician come in. They had spent $800 on these light fixtures, so they came back in and the electrician repaired them and then somebody duct taped them again and disconnected something. So right now, while they want to make the correction, they need a little assistance with whatever's going on to help them figure out what the type of bulbs are, but they do have the downward-facing lights. So I'll connect with, I'll connect Sarah with Kyle Hassler because he's now with the church doing their building oversight. Any thoughts or questions on that? Like really, since that's part of our strategic plan to kind of move this along, it would be nice in the next six months to make a little more progress. I did order another light meter, which will probably show up sometime this week. So we got another one identical to Diana's to help out the metering. Then if there's no questions or comments, we'll move to number two. A discussion of San Juan County's planning and zoning meetings regarding the ordinance for unincorporated areas. As everyone knows, there is a meeting, I believe it's on June 28th, a public hearing on the San Juan County proposed changes to the ordinances. And they're still making changes according to our representative on planning and zoning for San Juan County. So the final maps and changes are not up yet. She'll alert us when they, when they do go up. That's Melissa Rig. I talked with Amanda Podmore about planning and zoning, Bluff planning and zoning, putting together some comments based on those recommended changes. And the reason, as we talked about, is if the court system were to order a disconnect of those lands on the bench, that would be unincorporated at that point and would be subject to planning and zoning that San Juan County is doing. So it would be nice if we put together something as a way in, like, this is, this would work for Bluff, we'd like to see this change, whatever. So the commission plans on voting on July 2nd on these. So it's really imperative that we get a letter up there. And hopefully, in the next week, I'll see something from planning and zoning and we can circulate it and see if we have anything else that we want to cover. Any comments, any thoughts on that?
I guess I would just say that that's part of why we incorporated is we have much better voices at town. It's we're kind of a small voice in the county.
I would agree with you, and I do think it's important that we look at the proposed juices that they're putting up there. And we, it is correct that it's primarily Setland BLM. And Setland can pretty much do whatever they want, not have to follow planning and zoning for either the county or for us. But I feel like it is something we should respond to. So I'll try to make sure that Amanda circulates it and when to take a look at. We won't have a meeting before we can vote on it. So if it looks like planning and zoning fits with what we're thinking, just go out. Then number three, Bluff, a report on Bluff Water Works meeting on June 12th, 2024, and the status of the strategic plan. Does someone want to cover what Bluff Water was talked about?
I can. So the strategic plan, which got voted, got voted and approved, the agenda for the strategic plan got voted and approved in the last meeting, not this current, the previous meeting to this last meeting. So there were just some logistics talked about how Gary would put together the team. He's sending out some formal invitation letters. There are, so far, it kind of sounds like any member of the Bluff Water Works Board who wants to be on it, on the team, can be on it. There will be either, there was discussion about whether there would be two or more from the Town of Bluff Town Council. And I think the discussion kind of led to keeping it at two, so we didn't have to special notice every meeting that met. And then I, I need to go back, but it seems like there was a either two or three community members, and I think I've heard both things. So, so there will either be two or three community members who are invited to join the process as well. And then they reported on installation of or replacing radio read meter heads. And that they have the 30 that they had been working on installed and now are waiting for 30 more to come in. Have to come in in batches. And water tests all came back well, and it was, it was.
One thing I wanted to follow up with Gary Liechtenstein was, at the beginning of his summary of what, where he was at, he made a statement that this is planning for a strategic plan. And I'm not really sure what that meant because like when we hired our strategic planners, we hired them to kind of do everything, like plan for the animals with us, and it was one, if I remember correctly, one big proposal. So I'm not sure what the planning to plan meant. Jen, do you have any idea? Because I didn't pick anything up from the meeting prior to this one or this one, other than that one comment.
I think they just basically set the agenda of what they want to work on. I haven't, I haven't seen anything else come down the pipe yet. So I think that the prior meeting was to adopt the agenda that Gary had set forth. But I don't really think he's started to work on anything else. I could be wrong, but I didn't get that feeling out of the last meeting.
The meetings before that, the original ones, is what I heard him say was that he was setting it up to see about doing the whole strategic. This was preliminary work.
So I also had the impression, so I've been excited about that they are looking into taking the knowledge and data they have and making it available to people. So it's just not, you know, likely people that know it all. And I also got the impression that this first phase is maybe deciding how they're going to go about it, but not necessarily doing it yet. Maybe that, and I definitely could be wrong. Maybe the second phase is taking what they've decided on and, and actually doing it. But I'm still not sure what it is.
Well, maybe at the, the next meeting, if Gary is there, I know he's going, that he's on fire duty. So if he's there, I'll try to remember to ask him because I'm a little unclear. Where this is.
I'm just doing my notes, and what I do have is that they have basically, I think, approved the three areas that they want to focus the strategic plan on, being the creating a succession plan, a plan for growth, and then to create the joint town BWW entity for the water utility. So I kind of, I feel like that's the direction that they're moving in, kind of trying to figure out a plan of how to make those three things happen.
I, I guess my question probably comes down to, at the conclusion of the contract that they entered into for Gary that they're paying for, will they have a strategic plan? Or is there a second phase where they create a strategic plan similar to the way we did it? And that's what I wasn't clear about. So I guess that's a question we can ask at the next meeting. Jen, do you remember when the next meeting is, right on? The second Wednesday.
The second Wednesday. Let me tell you, pull up my calendar. Yes, I don't have it in my head. The 10th of July, yes.
All right. Are there any questions?
When do we need to select the two of us to go?
I don't know if we select or plus send us an invitation. I, I kind of thought that.
They would pick which two of us?
So I think that was the.
That was a discussion that, that I, it sort of sounded like two had already been invited from town council, but Linda said it was their strategic plan and so they get to pick.
It's a little weird, though. Like picking, then picking which of our body goes is a little.
He said he, he wanted it just to be two, which keeps it from the forum, but also two so that the two go back and talk.
I totally get the two thing.
No, I agree. I suggested.
I just find it a little weird to select from us rather than us deciding.
I suggested putting out like a jury. We put up a people we want to work with, they put up their people, you know, we kind of jointly pick. But it didn't sound, it sounds like that is specifically, Gary said that was specifically his job, is to pull together the team to work on this pre-line.
And that, that's interesting because I was left with the opposite opinion. I thought that we put up the two names of who on the council was interested. So that's a point we need to clarify pretty quickly with Gary.
Gary said at the, the end of, or when we were talking about that in the meeting, he said that that was his job, was to select community members, the three community members, two from the council and whoever on the water board.
Okay. Well, we'll see. I guess we just wait for the invitation then, so. We'll just see. Otherwise, we'll just go to the July 10th and clarify our questions. Then if there's nothing else, number four, is a report.
One other thought that just came to mind that he also said was that he was going to be vetting everybody who was interested. So, so he may get a call.
Okay. Well, we'll just sit back and wait. At least it's not on our plate to worry about. Then number four, report on Bluff planning and zoning meeting. A little one.
Okay. So they had one meeting since the last update, which was on June 5th. And there were no land use clearances. So they moved on. Erin, our town manager, updated the status of the Rural Communities Grant. Planning and zoning is the advisory position, I guess is what you would call it. And they confirm, they sort of back up the confirmation of the expenditures. And they had Marcia, Marcia sign, they all voted, Marcia signed and submitted to Erin so she could get that submitted. It was an easy one this time because there haven't really been expenditures, but they're in charge of overseeing that rural communities grant. And do you want, is that, do I add anything that, okay. And then Dark Skies, they are studying the ordinance more just within their council to make sure they're familiar with all the specifics, especially since they had questions about canopy lighting and that sort of thing, but nothing, they're not working through the ordinance other than just becoming more familiar themselves. They did have three sign permits. Each of them was with a $50 permit fee. The first one was at the Bear's Ears Information Center. They have an existing sign, but weren't sure if they needed a permit or could just call it existing, and then they just fixed it up. But they decided it was abandoned, so it did need a new permit, which they issued once they got their $50. BCHPA, which is Bluff City Historic Preservation Association, they wanted a sign permit for the sign that we all approved at West Park. The kiosk was within the sizing, and so was the actual sign. Because it's not commercial property over there, it's ag or whatever, but it, that kiosk fits everywhere, the size of that, and so did the sign. So that was also approved, waiting for the $50. Valerie Brown is representing real estate, and I'd say the name, but if I did, I would probably mix her up with somebody else. But there was, came to give a permit on 191, and it was in commercial. And so there, on our current ordinance, only one ground-mounted sign is allowed per property, and it's a 10-acre piece. So she wanted two of those. The application to be one sign, one ground-mounted sign with two sites. And that satisfied everybody. And it is in the commercial zone, so it does need a permit. There was concern because we, as a council, had taken out the temporary signs. And as we discussed at the time, to keep the enforcement easier and to keep monitoring so that you know how many days and whatnot. But it does impact commercial posting of rural or real estate signs. They will have to come to get a permit to do those ground-mounted signs on commercial areas. I questioned whether it was an off-premise sign for a business that wasn't located there, which gives you a little more flexibility. But they did give her a permit for the one sign. But it might be something that we need to look at as far as only one. So if you have two entrances, you know, it didn't quite match up with the other things that we changed on, on available sites. They will have, their next meeting is mid-July. They will do a special meeting, will be convened if necessary to cover anything that might come up between then. Questions?
No, and I actually, thanks for raising it about the gap in time. I actually raised that with Amanda Podmore. That five weeks is, in my opinion, too long to go between meetings. And I know the discussion had been to set one when they needed it, but that they probably do need to set one if they're going to work on the San Juan County letter for the zoning ordinance changes. The other thing that came up in my review, kind of going back to refresh my memory on things is, and this, this falls on me, so I'm going to, I told Amanda, I'll take responsibility for this. When planning and zoning, that's their meetings for each year like we do, they set the meeting and then we have to approve those meeting dates. And we have not done that since 2019. So that's something that should be on that list of things that we do. The first meeting in January, in addition to electing, you know, vice, a mayor pro temp, and it makes sure treasurer's on board, all of those things is as soon after their first meeting where they've set their dates, that we look at those dates and we approve them. So there's no point in doing it midpoint in the year. But I think January, we need to be sure we get that back on the radar. Or do a review of some of the things like planning, zoning regulations and code of conduct and see if we need to clean anything up. Move it, it's been six years since we wrote these five years, six years, so.
And they've done, you know, they have their two a month, and sometimes they fall on holidays. Like in July, it's on the 4th of July weekend. But they've been doing work sessions quite regularly to get the sign ordinance out.
And I talked to Amanda today, and she's going to finalize with the commissioners, but it's looking like they're tentatively planning to meet probably on like the 27th. They didn't want to overlap with the county's meeting, but do want to meet pretty quickly after. So that will be finalized, hopefully by end of day, if not really tomorrow. But that's what they're tentatively looking at.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that? All right, then moving to number five, report on the Cooperative Cultural Center's designing committee meetings. I was not there today because I was traveling and I had such a bad connection, I, I didn't want to disrupt the meeting. So Erin and Jen, do you want to do an update on the last couple of meetings?
Sure. So the meeting, we'll start with last week's meeting. I think we talked about it a little bit in our last meeting, but basically we didn't have a UDB representative at our last meeting, but we did, did meet with Jocelyn Meyer to discuss playground playground information in hopes maybe that we can make an informed decision about whether to use the CCC's area for playground. That was last week's meeting. This week's meeting, we did have UDB representation, yay. Janet Stolman, she was there. Davis Philford arrived in person, probably out there about halfway through the meeting, I would think. And then Hank Stevens was online with us, and Janet also had, I'm not clear as to what her position is. She's temporary.
Krishana Johnson.
Yeah.
She, she introduced her as a consultant for UDB, but her duration of time is unclear at this point, so I'm. And outside of that, there was no discussion as to what she is consulting on.
Right, and she didn't really, she didn't really participate in the meeting although she was taking notes, so.
Does she have an attorney?
I don't think so.
Don't know? I don't think so based on one of the other conversations.
Yeah, Janet had also mentioned, we talked about the fact that they still need to be working on their SAMs document to receive their pass-through money. They are working on trying to get their address, physical address.
So were, were they able to? So did, did Janet say if she was going to go to their bank and see about changing the address on their banking statement and getting an immediate banking statement from the bank?
So when I, so, no, so I had received a letter from her last week from the bank. And the bank says, we've changed your address. But then on the bank statement, it's still the PO box. So, and the letter won't do, it has to be on the actual bank statement. So I told her as much, I looked at what she sent over, and I don't, I don't think it's going to apply. So that, that is still on hold. But we did have along that in our meeting with the project officer, that this really needs to be finished in the next week or two, or else we're at risk of losing the grant, not just the pass-through funding. And she understood the severity.
So I think when I was, sent the text, what I did when I was told I needed to have the bank statement, I went to Wells Fargo, talked to one of the people at Wells Fargo. While I was standing there, she printed out a new bank statement for me and handed it to me with my physical address on it. And then at the end of the day, she changed it back to our mailing address, our post office box. So it, I don't know where they bank, if it's Zion or Wells Fargo. But if it's Wells Fargo, it can be done like literally in five minutes.
I think it's Zion's, and I think that when I needed to come up with the physical address, I just have them list both my physical address and my post office box. That way, if it gets sent to the post office box, I don't get, you know, too much grief about, about, because it has both addresses on there, so it doesn't get returned to sender.
So part of the problem is if there, okay. So Erin and I ran into the problem where there was an additional piece added to our address, and that threw the SAM number into chaos. All of the addresses have to be absolutely identical. But I'm glad she understood the severity of it. And it was very clear in our meeting with April that this needs to be done. What did they say about the anti-lobbying form?
She said that she had sent an email to David Everett but had never heard back. And so she is going to. And so she is going to speak with the Bigfoot Board members who were part of the Ute Tribe. And so the Ute Nation has an attorney, and so she's asking to reach out to that attorney to seek guidance regarding the anti-lobbying form.
I gave her David Everett's contact information. I will follow up with her again, because if she just calls back, I mean, Bookstore, that's where he is, he's also working for Moab as their manager, so he should be, as a manager, whatever he's doing. But he should be very easy to reach, he's always been easy for me. So I will follow up with Janet again. These things, they need to be.
Maybe after the call, she said she just emailed, so maybe if she calls him, she'll get a better response.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we discussed the playground with the, we waited until, oh, okay, getting ahead of myself. We talked about project manager position, and we have received two applications for the project manager position. And we will leave it open for a few more days. We discuss, we agree to sit on the interview committee again. And we are going to attempt to hold interviews for that visit July 2nd. So hopefully we can get that filled and moving forward.
With you being out of town, I think Jen would be a perfect here. Not pushing your breath back. I think with all of our travel schedules, that would probably work for that.
So Davis said that Tuesdays and Tuesdays were busy, and Erin's leaving on vacation shortly after that. So the second, it was either do the second or wait until the end of July, and we'd rather move it on. After we discussed that, Janet expressed that she would like to see kind of chart with kind of the breakdown of monies, similar to, I think, as the chart that we did when we had our last joint meeting. But we agreed that could try and have another joint meeting of the boards, the project manager, and that that would be a good way that project manager could get more identified with the project as well as if we created some kind of check or something like that. So we proposed having that around the end of July. No date was set in stone, but just thought that that would be a good time for if you get things moving. We talked about the playground. Davis said he liked the idea. He hoped that maybe we could incorporate swimming pool, which I thought was a little ambitious at this point in time. He said he can't vote for his board, but they would take it to the board, so we're still waiting to hear what their board might say about that. And then we confirmed that Tuesdays at 2:00 was a good meeting time. Everybody agreed that that was a good time. And that was about it.
Yeah, and their next board meeting is supposed to be in the next couple of weeks. They were talking about it after today, but they should meet pretty quickly.
So can you go back to what Janet said she would like to see in terms of a chart?
Can I?
Yes.
Essentially, all she's, I mean, she's asking for what a project manager needs to deliver. They need to put together an organizational timeline with priorities, when are the projects going to be taking place, what are the financial responsibilities of each entity. So no, she is asking for what a project manager should be delivering in their normal scope of work. So I do think that we have gone over a lot of that incarnation, and there haven't been any significant changes from like the grants that we've spoken about. But she said that it would, the way that I was bringing it, it would be helpful when we're talking in meetings to have a physical board that we can point to and say, "We're here, check. This is our next step," as opposed to, you know, we have a lot of verbal conversations about it, and, you know, are kind of all over the place in our meetings. So an organizational device.
I also thought it was to keep clear as to which grant we were using for which payment, because it came up as we were discussing using the USDA grant.
I think so.
For fire suppression, I think, and she was just, you know, wanting something.
What money was?
Chart-wise, yes.
All right, anything else on that piece? All right, then moving to the next one, a discussion and vote on Bluff's playground committees' request to approve a location for a potential playground. Would I be correct in assuming that that's table till the next meeting?
Yes.
Right.
At least the next meeting, maybe even further out than that, depending on when UDB has their next board meeting and can get back to us with a.
And nobody knew, I mean, Janet didn't know, and Davis didn't know when the next board meeting would be?
They said that they would be identifying that today. They left and were gonna meet over at the modular afterwards to talk about that for their board.
I think they've been, with the deaths and Davis', Davis's family, I think they've been kind of discombobled for the last month or so.
Look, we have another scammer. We're not letting this person out, just so you all know.
Does that course not have any kind of a firewall that prevents this?
If it is a public meeting link, which it is, since it's listed on our website, there's nothing we can, there's really nothing we can do about it, except for screen to let them in or not let them in.
How fun. Thank you, Erin, for doing that. Okay, moving to number seven, report on the status of a capital culture. Culture, is it cultural grant? I was.
It is cultural, yes. Capital cultural grant through Utah Arts. So I've been talking to their finance director, the individual who had originally been assigned to the grant is no longer with their organization, and actually, they are not going to be doing this grant any longer. And so even if we weren't able to use the funds, they can't reallocate it, because it was sent through the state. So our grant, you know, was kind of the last year it was awarded. So this is the $79,450 that Jim so wonderfully was able to obtain through the state. The contract date was due to end June 30th of this year. And to Neil, I'm working with the finance director to get an extension on that contract. And so I guess the only thing that, you know, I want to make sure I have everyone's approval here, that you all would be okay that we signed off on that to move it forward a full another year to June 30th, 2025. There's approximately $41,000 remaining in that grant pool. We actually have the money, it is in the joint checking account, our joint checking account, but it is to be used specifically for fire suppression. We've used other funds from it to do the ceiling removal and the asbestos testing. All those need to take place before fire suppression, so that $41,000, highly recommended, only goes towards fire suppression, since we are gonna need a pretty big pot of money to pull from. But yeah, really exciting that they were willing to work with us on that. She did not indicate that there were any concerns, but we would be very hard pressed to do another extension, because this is our second extension. So yeah, if everyone's okay once that comes over, they need to hear back before the end of June, so we'd want to get that signed and sent back, so.
Does that need a vote?
I don't know. And does that need a vote?
No, I think we're fine. I mean, we've already approved the grant, the extensions just a minute. So I certainly would, I certainly think we should extend it so we can use it, that's been our concern right along. Anything for Erin on that? Thanks, Erin, for working on it and keeping track of it.
Oh, and I did, the only other thing I should tell you, and I can, I think I sent it to Ann and Linda, since they're keeping track of it financially, I did submit our annual report, so I can just send that out to the council so you can see it. But essentially, it just says what I just told you. Ceiling removal, asbestos testing from last year, and we will use the money before the end of next fiscal year.
That looks pretty good. All right, then moving on to a report on meeting with Mac McDonald, who is the San Juan County Administrator regarding emergency services. There is no polite way to say that San Juan County wants to shift emergency services to the Town of Bluff. And if they could have done it in Mac's words, yesterday, they would have done it. That being said, Erin and I had a lot of questions from Mac about how this would work, different options. I think there are a number of things that we need to cover in a work session on this. But the bottom line is that Mac said that there was a change in the law in 2021 that required, and those were his words with me on the phone in previous conversations, that required the town to take on these services. That is not what the law sets. The law that was passed in 2021 said that towns and municipalities can contract with the county to provide these services. And so the questions then around the second time that this has come up in the last, in recent months, was yes, there could be a contract, and he had laid out some figures, and Erin did an amazing job of, and I don't want to say challenging those figures, but really questioning the figures that the county is relying on to say what our potential cost would be for taking these on. And given that we have an inter-local agreement that does not require us to pay any money, I would say that standing on that contract where there is no exchange of money, that we should be able to continue working on that through San Juan, at a minimum, through San Juan County's fiscal year, which is December 31st. That's already in their budget. We did our budget, and I had specifically made an inquiry about whether we needed to include money in the 2025 budget before we finalized it. And the answer was no, this is coming down the pike. Well, it came down the pike like a floodgate. It came. And so before we can have a meaningful conversation, Erin and I need to do a little more work with Mac to see what the numbers look like, we need to look at the options. One option that was thrown out to me by Mac two months ago was that the county donate the building and equipment to us, and we run our own programs, which could mean partnering with UNHS. And I met with the chief financial officer following that meeting with, I met with the UNHS chief financial officer. So there are a number of options. One is the special service district. My understanding is that the assistant fire chief has been talking to people about running the fire department. What was bothersome about that conversation with Mac is that Mac said that our volunteer fire department did not, quote, "want to be a part of the Town of Bluff," end quote. So there are a number of conversations that we all need to be having, not just EMS, talking with EMS at county level fire, talking with fire at the county level, us talking to Mac at the county level. But if we're going to be taking this on in one way or another, or it's going to shift to a special service district, this is not going to happen in a month, in my opinion. And we need to have a plan. This is too crucial, too crucial an area to just go, woo, it's Bluff. Erin did a great job. She was very assertive, and I'll let her speak for herself about the points that she had. But from the administrative side, Erin did a very good job of challenging the assumptions. So Erin, I'll just turn that over to you.
Yeah, so I will say, you know, I walked away from the conversation, all entities understand that these are critical services, they are not, you know, they're not just going to go to the wayside. But clearly, there needs to be some coordination between entities, as Ann said, this is not something that they can just dump on anyone and expect us to pick it up, you know, tomorrow. But I think from a financial standpoint, I really want to ensure that if we continue to work with the county, which I think is absolutely on the table, that we are not overpaying. So when he had broken it out, it was very clear that, so there was Monticello, and then outside of Monticello, city limits, and then Landing, outside of Landing limits, and then it was just Bluff. And there were other communities listed around. But I do think that in talking to some of the EMTs, and then, you know, just what we're seeing, we do want to ensure that if EMTs are responding outside of Bluff Incorporated limits, that we wouldn't be charged for that. And of course, there is a lot of interdepartmental cooperation and mutual aid agreements and everything. The other point that I wanted to bring up, you know, and it's possible that those numbers might be absolutely accurate. We do have an aging population. EMS services are critical in our town, and I think we talked to, you know, both agreed that pretty much every business owner has seen the ambulance at some point for their guests. So yes, while we might have a number of things that are indeed inside our incorporated limits, if we're going to be paying the county to uphold these services, it's really important that we have access to the same resources that other communities have access to. I will not pretend like I know everything that is going on, but I have heard a lot of feedback that Bluff kind of gets the second-hand items. And, you know, there are pieces of equipment, as well as larger pieces of equipment, that aren't necessarily the newest and the brightest. So I think it's really important that if we do continue on with an agreement with them, that we are advocating for ourselves, that we're getting the best equipment. And then if it's not the case, then we need to set for the plan that would ensure that we're able to provide those resources. There are a lot of fantastic federal, state, and local grants that would be, you know, able to help us get those departments to where they need to be to provide those life-saving services. So a couple, a couple different ways to look at it, but I do think it's really important that we don't just say, yep, we're taking it tomorrow, but that it's a coordinated plan. And I do want to ensure from the fiscal standpoint that we are paying for what we need to. So I do want to reiterate, did not walk away, that, you know, we're all throwing our hands up in the air, this is just gonna go, you know, we know that these are critical services, and that's why we're starting the conversation now. And I would encourage us to ensure that this is a very open and honest and transparent conversation for everyone. We certainly don't want to have the community have concerns about this. We understand how critical these services are. So we will make sure that these are frequent discussions.
So stay tuned, I guess, is the next thing up. We'll session so we can have a more thorough discussion and maybe get some, a little more information from Mac about what the commissioners are thinking. All right, then moving to number nine, a report discussion and vote on the United States Department of Agriculture Grants and Opportunities. And so Erin, do you want to cover what we did in the meeting with the USDA?
Yeah. So we had, I will not call it a surprise visit, but a short notice visit from Colette Walker, and it was Chris, and then I don't remember the other gentleman who joined us, he's up on the Wasatch front. And do you remember his first name?
Was it Matt?
It might have been Matt.
I think it was.
These wonderful folks wanted to come down, so they are the grants and agency that gave us $50,000 to use on fire suppression, so they wanted to come see the building. I think since they were here last, last fall, we've taken out some ceilings, and there's a little extra rental, rental work going on, so they did do a little walkthrough. But Colette's real reasoning coming down was that USDA has access to four $50,000 grants. The grant program is called the Rural Community Development Initiative Grant, and it is $50,000, four $50,000 grants for underserved communities in the state of Utah. San Juan is the only one who is eligible to apply for these grants. The grant deadline is July 10th. And so between ourselves and the county, potentially other municipalities, but I got the impression that, you know, they were kind of focused on Bluff, we have the opportunity to submit up to four applications. It's a pretty, I'll be honest, it's a pretty broad scope. Essentially, eligible areas are rural communities, you know, the people who are in the community of the town, which is probably what we focus on. Community economic and development projects in rural areas, and rural community development initiative grants can be used for, but not limited to, home ownership education, minority business education, strategic planning development, access to funding sources, work training, we might most. We might most be able to use something for it would be like emergency services or emergency resources, like AEDs or like a generator, or things like that. And so what I'd like to talk about today is that I have not combed our strategic plan recently, but I'd like to get a list put together of items I could take to Colette and say, would any of these apply? And then from there, if you all were interested, go ahead and get the grant applications written, and we could get those submitted before the July 10th deadline. And it's the, and I don't know how much you would like to, but paper application is July 15th, electronic application is July 10th. So a pretty, pretty quick turnaround, but we've, we've done this turnaround before. So I think AEDs could potentially make sense, and we'd have three years to use the funding. So we could put the applications in in hopes of being able to use it at the CCC buildings, and so it's going to be another community center. I know we've talked about generators a lot. I know that Sandy Mayard donated the two that are currently at the turquoise building, but given that they're a little bit dated, if we could write a grant to get a new generator installed at this building, or that building, or both buildings, that could be a good way to then maybe be able to use those generators for somewhere else. And then, yeah, I am open to any input from council as to if this is something that we want to apply for this year, or what kind of bring up things we could do for $50,000. And it looks like pretty specifically whatever we create would be a package for $50,000.
So I think one point of clarification, if I understood this correctly, was that each of these applications could be up to $50,000, but we should lump similar things together in one application. So like, if you did an AED request, we wouldn't want to throw in furnishings. We have nothing in our budgets right now for CCC furnishings. So we could do like $30,000 for furnishings, then another one for a generator and AED, which would be about 50 total. So we, you know, we have a chance to work these a little bit.
And I will say there is a small cash match. I have not clarified that amount. Anne, did you get any sense of problems you get?
No. I was hoping those would be the materials that she sent, that Colette sent over. They weren't, okay. We can follow up with that. I would like to put at least one application in for us, and that means when I get back July 1st, before Erin leaves July 6th, if we could get some ideas so that we could talk, talk about it and try to slam something together for those.
Can you forward the grant information?
And then we have a lot of the materials already put, USDA is very form-heavy, which we have filled out those forms before, which is nice. And if I remember correctly, the great narratives do not need to be super lengthy, like cookies of.
I just am thinking about the generator idea. Those generators that are at the turquoise are mega generators. They could run the building kind of idea. And for $50,000, I don't think you're going to get a new one that's going to do that. But I wonder if you couldn't get some sort of proposal together to get operator, somebody who could move them, install them, get them working, and get them in place for that amount because they're, they're big. They don't just roll over there. They are massive, and they're, they never were really used. So they're basically brand new. They're just need that upgrade, you know, the oil changed or whatever to make them work.
So one of the things that, and I think his name was Matt, but I'm not sure. There were three people from USDA, and he, he was down just kind of accompanying the other two. He did a lot of, has done a lot of construction as background, this construction. And he said that when they're, when they're that old, basically what most of those, and correct me if I misheard this, but I, mostly what they do is they strip them down and sell them for parts because they don't, they can't get the parts anymore. So all you're doing is getting those massive, older, and like when I called the company, I couldn't get any information on the parts. And so it will cost us money to figure, well, first we have to find out how much the cost would be to take down the walls and move those generators. That's one. My understanding is Sandy Mayard would like them out of there. And, I mean, this, I give Bluff the feeling that those generators could really be worked on. If it's just basically you add oil, that might be one thing, but I don't know the condition of those generators, so.
Another thought, I mean, again, this is just popping into my mind right now, so thinking out loud with you, but if we're doing solar, maybe that money should be spent on batteries, and then the batteries could run the school. What you'd like is for people to be able to come and plug in their CPAPs and their oxygen and, and have some heat and cooling depending on the season. And if we're going to electrify the building that way, put a battery pack there instead of a generator.
The IT needs or anything.
Oh. Nothing.
Did they do the playground?
And now they're like, shit. I guess lumped in IT, there's, you feel like cameras or anything like that.
Yeah.
For sharing space.
I know, I have some of it funded through, if some of the IT funded through the state rural economic development one, a lot of our electrical is funded, but yeah, cameras and stuff, that would be a good one.
What about installation of the solar?
I think a lot of that's covered through Canyon Country Discovery Center, but I know Anne has more information on that.
Is it, you know, like we talked about building carports so that people could park in the shade all the way around, you know, Sixth, all the way around Black Locus, and somebody could, we could build those structures that would take the solar.
And Colette did say that we could put in additional applications, like for the building itself. She's like, I know we've already funded part of it, this does not preclude you from submitting additional ones, so stuff like that, or stuff like, like Anne mentioned, like the furnishings, which I don't have any.
Playground.
Yeah, I can definitely ask about the playgrounds.
Anything else outside of the building?
I was going to say, when we were looking at things earlier on with the DRC, we had some outside ideas that HDP was looking at, that we couldn't move funds from the EPA grant, but maybe.
And one of them was getting the wells up and functioning and updated, or whatever you would do, call that to a well, the maintenance done on them so that we can use them, both of them, and that will take some funds.
I think all of those would fit under like community facilities or community economic development projects. And then, yeah, I am pleased, I encourage you to, especially in preparation for our strategic planners coming back, let's look at the strategic plan because there might be some real, just poignant ones that we could pull and say, yes, we could fund all of this through this grant. I think, I do think we have enough time to pull together at least one application, if not two, hopefully. Not to pull, we're going to get that, but yeah, a lot of it is form-based, and we just might call upon you guys to help, help write some of that. So I will call upon you to help write some of that. It's a great opportunity, and it's nice.
Erin?
I think you guys are a good fit for this.
Forgot what I was going to say. The fact that we have three years to use it is really, to use any funding is good because it's not, we can look in the future. And I do, all the ideas are good. I think Erin, I can explore them and start trying to figure it out. I really, the fact that we don't have to use the money right now is really a benefit because when I first heard that they were coming down to talk to us about more grant money, I was like, you know, we're kind of at the point where we need to spend what we have to do what we're doing, but the fact that we push it out would be good. Any other thoughts, or if you think of anything, email either Erin or myself, and I'll talk to Erin in the next couple days about how we coordinate this. Anything else on this? We have time on the second to be able to vote on a specific one, so I think Erin and I can kind of somehow follow up to find out what would be permissible to request, and then cull that down into a couple of applications. Then I think the next one is for Linda, the reports from San Juan Economic Development and the Tourism Tax Boards.
Yesterday was the Tourism Tax Meeting, and a lot of it was talking about a grant that we're trying to get, which we get every year. I think it's for $242,000, and we don't necessarily get all of that money, but we usually get something. And so the rest, quite a bit of the meeting was also about marketing. And Relic, which is the company that works, that we work with, talked about the marketing they're doing. They market media, they market different countries, different cities, different areas. And so they're pretty comprehensive, and they also are including research on, so they're collecting data that has to do with the marketing they're doing to see what's the most effective and what can be changed. And it was pretty interesting. They have a couple of marketing campaigns. One of them is More Utah, Go West. This is for Canada, Head South to Go West. So a lot of people from Canada actually come here. They are doing newsletters, and I don't know how to get these newsletters, but monthly newsletters for visitors. And I believe in July, one of the businesses that they're going to target in the county is Canyon Coffee, Ancient Waves, and there are a couple others, but those were the two that interested me most. Today was the Economic Development Board, and I had to leave early. But a lot of it was more housekeeping things. I mainly picked some dates. We changed chairman. The big thing that's happened, so Elaine Gisler has left, although she is still helping. She was actually chairing part of the meeting. And so what the county has done is they have split the Economic Development Board, and it's into, one half is economic development, and the other half is tourism. And so Allison Yamoto Sparks will continue with the tourism. She's been working hard for at least 15 years. And so, and she has asked them previously to let her do this. And so, so right now, they have split them, and they are looking for an economic development manager, director.
Any questions for Linda, any thoughts?
Allison is great. She's awesome.
She's very good. They should just keep Elaine up for her time as economic development and let her work remotely. She's amazing. Okay, if there's, if there aren't any questions, we'll move to the number 11, financials, and that's Linda's as well.
I sent everyone the financials. I usually send them Monday or Tuesday. I want to get as many bills on it as I can, so if I'm expecting something else to come in, I hope that it comes in so it could be on this. So I think I mentioned this before, most of these are actually already paid because I can pay routine, recurring invoices, plus invoices that we've agreed on up to $5,000. So, so this is partly so that the council can see what kind of things we've paid, plus they're in our minutes, so the community can look to see. So are there any questions? And can I get a vote to say approve?
I have motioned to approve the bills that were presented for payment. Is that? Miss Dobbin empty on Craig Benali, it looks like.
Right, I did not see Craig. Craig didn't send his payroll in yet.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks. I've got motorcycles flying by with an open window, so I can hear. Anything else on these? All right, then, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're moving to other. And is there anything on other? If there's.
We, we, do we have, we do have concerns about, about the amount of money that we have in Zion. Is this a good time to talk about it, or do we need to wait until next week?
I think we probably could talk about it. We can't do anything about it. So it's your, we've got a few minutes. I just point out that the PTIF is totally uninsured. So I'm not sure what you do. That's, and I would prefer to have us all have more information, but if you want to talk about it, go ahead.
PTIF has not lost any money since, I mean, I look back to 20, year 2000, I guess.
Nor has lands. I mean.
Right, but we've just had some warnings that maybe that we should go by the rules.
By the rules?
Just insured amounts and stuff, just, you know, set up another, just so that we don't lose any.
Well, we'd have to go to another bank, correct?
Well, we could do that if that's preferable to not investing it.
So this will show everybody how old I am. So everybody remember the Great Depression, people pulled their money out of banks, the economy collapsed and went to shit. So I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, Lou. In some ways, I feel like, I mean, certainly we should have a discussion about it. None of us want to lose the money. But PTIF is totally uninsured, so. And banking would become a nightmare if we had multiple banks, which I don't even know that you can, because I think we have to have one bank, you know, one financial institution to do the.
Bob Springmeyer seemed to be pretty informed on, on the systems, and he helps report a lot of our financials, so maybe we need to check in with him and see what he advises.
When I checked in with him following your comments, what he said to me, correct, PTIF is totally uninsured. So, I mean, I think that certainly talking about it is a good idea. Let me get it on the July 2nd agenda, though. If I don't write it down, I won't remember.
When I've talked to Dave about. When I've talked to Dave about transferring money, he's always been very positive about transferring it to PTIF. He's never talked about losing money. Because being, we're actually, we have about 300,000 in our general fund. So we're not talking about a lot of money.
Well, that's, everybody informs themselves as much as possible between now and July 2nd and talk about it. I'll put it on for a possible vote. And then is there any other? If not, it is 11 minutes after five.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you all. And I'll hang up.